Now we'll move on to item B, please.
Item 6B, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Ludorf and Scelmanini for the design of the Acapella well replacement project in an amount not to exceed $610,000.
And we're gonna turn over to Haywon Ritchie, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Haywon Ritchie, city engineer for San Bruno. I would like to turn this presentation over to Dahlia Manalas. She is our associate civil engineer who is working on the Acapella well project.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council and members of the public. I'm Dahlia Manalas with the Public Works Department and I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Okay, so I will be presenting on the Acapella well replacement project. The objective for this presentation is to provide background information on the Acapella well replacement project, project phasing and schedule, and also to recommend council action to authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Ludorf and Scelmanini. Moving forward, I'll be referring to them as LNS. Oh, excuse me. Sorry, let me... On the agenda... Sorry, excuse me. On the agenda, we have, we will cover the Acapella well replacement background, project phasing and scheduling, scope of work, staff recommendation, council questions, public comment, and council deliberation.
Dahlia, can you click this place settings and duplicate the monitor so we're seeing the full slide?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Slideshow.
Okay, is that...
Can you go to slideshow at the top?
Okay, slideshow. Sorry, is this better?
That's better.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, I apologize. Okay, so on the agenda, we will be covering the Acapella well replacement background, project phasing and scheduling, scope of work, staff recommendation, and conclude with council questions, public comment, council deliberation, and action. So as we are aware, the city owns and operates its water system. The city operates five groundwater wells that extract, treat, and pump water into the distribution system. Four wells are currently active and one inactive, and that is the well 15, also known as Commodore Well. So well 15 had been a significant source of the city's water production until it went out of service in 2010 due to low production requiring constant maintenance. So in 2012, the city procured Ehrler and Kaluwowski Inc., also known as EKI, for engineering design services for the well 15 replacement. The scope of work included constructing test wells and the design of the production well. The following year, in 2013, the city evaluated six potential well sites for the well number 15 replacement project, and two sites were selected. Acapella site and Commodore site were found to be best suitable for a new well for reasons related to the likelihood of high well yield production rate located away from existing city wells resulting in less interference from other wells, no additional impact on the surrounding environment, and the ability to provide the additional supply to pressure zones 3, 4, and 5 without additional infrastructure that includes piping or pumps. In October of 2013, staff presented an update on well 15 replacement project to the city council with the recommendation to proceed with design and award of a construction contract for the two wells. So one at the Acapella site and the other at the Commodore Park site here, you see in the circles. The first test well would be installed at the Acapella site and the other at the Commodore Park site. So the first well would be installed at the Acapella site, and if the results were favorable, the city would not drill the second test well at Commodore Park site. And this would result in substantial cost savings. In addition, the city would avoid any disruption to the dog park at Commodore Park. The city council concurred with staff's recommendation. The following year, in September 2014, construction of the test well at the Acapella site was completed. Drilling logs were analyzed and water quality sampling was performed at the new test well. EKI concluded that a production well installed at the Acapella site should be capable of producing similar to the production rate of several other wells in San Bruno. So the water quality sampling data was reviewed and it was concluded that a production well installed at the Acapella site would yield a combination of water quality and production rate satisfying the city's need. An additional test well would not be necessary. So during the conceptual design of the production well, it was determined that the required building footprint for the wellhead treatments facilities needed to be larger to accommodate the filters, piping, and electrical equipment. So the ingress and egress for the well site was obstructed by an adjacent vacant parcel that I have highlighted here in blue. So due to these site constraints, the project was halted. And in 2017, Monogram Residential Acapella, the property owner of the adjacent parcel at the time, executed a grant deed to transfer ownership of this adjacent parcel to the city in which the city accepted on July 7, 2017. So by the time the city acquired additional real estate to move forward with the project, both the city and EKI had experienced a turnover with the team that had originally worked on the design that would necessitate the submittal of a new proposal and had insufficient funds to finalize the design. Staff determined that the design of the production well and facilities could be phased as another project and proceed with issuing the request for proposal. In January 2021, the city issued a request for proposals, which was posted on the city's website and sent to multiple consulting firms. One proposal was received from LNS. Staff conducted an evaluation on the received proposal and has determined that Ludorf and Scelmanini is highly qualified, has demonstrated accurate project understanding, has substantial design experience on water well projects, and has successfully completed similar design projects for various water agencies across the state such as San Jose Water Company, SFPUC, and the city of Mountain View. And the proposal costs is $610,000 and within the current budget of $1.8 million available in this fiscal year. So the Acapella well replacement project will be completed in two phases. The first phase will consist of designing and constructing a production well. And this includes drilling, water quality soil sampling, well construction, and well development with an estimated completion of about 12 months. And the second phase will consist of designing and constructing the well facilities that includes necessary housing, pump, motor, automatic control equipment such as SCADA, and discharge piping and disinfection equipment with an estimated completion of 18 months. So the scope of work for the Acapella well replacement project includes preparing bid documents and construction support for phase 1 and 2, also obtaining approvals and permits from regulatory agencies, and preparing required regulatory documents. The scope also includes decommissioning of well 15 in accordance with California's Title 22 Code of Regulations related to drinking water. So staff is recommending city council to adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with LNS for the design of the Acapella well replacement project in amount not to exceed $610,000. And I will turn this over for any questions and discussions.
Thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it. And if there's any members of the public that wish to speak, if you could raise your hand at this time, wait a couple minutes and I'll turn it to council members for questions. Any questions from council at this time? Okay, let's go to the public. I know the city clerk will correct me, but I see no hands at this time. So we will end public comment on this topic and we will bring it to council for questions or comments. Excuse me, council member Mason.
Thank you. So I think I just kind of need a little bit of a better understanding of the risk involved of not approving this tonight just because it's half a million dollars. What is there in immediate, is this an immediate need that can't be part of next year's budget?
Sure, council member Mason, I can help to answer that. Haywon Ritchie, city engineer for San Bruno. Good evening. There is currently CEQA exemption for this project because it is replacing well 15, but we have been advised that if we wait too long to construct this project and get it underway, that that CEQA clearance could expire. And so, you know, in an effort to not go through the environmental process of clearing a new well, we would like to move forward with the design as soon as possible.
Okay, so then, if the, this is, sounds like this is really for the design from the staff report and from what you just mentioned, but the actual construction in the staff report is listed as $3 million. So are we gonna be able to, are we gonna be able to produce this, you know, this design, this project to get it up to the place where construction would actually occur? And then are we gonna be able to fund the actual construction? And they're all kind of part of the same question is without the $3 million for the construction, are we gonna be in compliance with CEQA?
Yes, and so this first phase will be the design, and we hope to, you know, go through the design and then we will have to budget for the design, or sorry, for the construction once those estimates are better known. And we are undergoing the budgeting process right now and we will budget to what is necessary in order to construct the project at the appropriate fiscal year. It could mean that we proceed with the design now and then budget for construction in fiscal year 2023, so 2223, so that we can award thoroughly part of the next fiscal year. And of course, we've worked closely with finance to ensure that we have adequate funding in order to meet the project needs.
And then I can see the city manager's hands up. I have more questions, but he may want to answer this part.
So take you through the mayor.
Yes, please.
I just want to point out that council member Mason, your question begun with potentially holding off till next budget cycle. I just want to make it clear that there's not an appropriation request with the action that is before you tonight. The money for this project was built into the current budget, which is typical for these projects because you sort of go on this stair step ladder of design and then budget for construction. It's also worth noting because I spent the last few weeks in very detailed capital budgeting meetings with all of our, with all of our staff, is that we are going through a practice of budgeting for the dollars that will be expended in the fiscal year that that work will occur versus saying, oh, we have a $3 million project, let's budget all that money today. And so we are moving to a best practice, which is to plan out your expenditures over the multi-year cycle that they will occur, which actually decreases the amount of revenue that you need to generate to the fund. And so it's important to note that this sort of stair step process where we budget for design and then we budget for construction is totally normal, totally envisioned with how we plan these very large multi-year projects.
Okay, helpful. So then, in that case, should then the actual construction be also a portion of it budgeted then in the next year? Would we anticipate that in June as opposed to the following year, 2023?
My recollection is that we are budgeting to design for this fiscal year, but that does back the question of whether we'll need to, you know, potentially pre-appropriate a little bit earlier if we do to get design done quickly and need to move to the construction phase. So that is possible. I think currently we are budgeting to design until we have a better idea what the construction cost would be because the first phase of construction is production well. And there may potentially be adequate funding in order to award the construction of the production well. But of course, I think the next phase, which is the building and the pumps and the electrical, that will likely not occur until the next fiscal year, and so we would request that appropriate amount at that time.
Okay, yeah, just so what I don't want is I don't want another, you know, sign or plan and then not move on, not have the funds, or not be prepared to move on to the next step for this whole process to come to fruition. The other question I had is you mentioned that, I think, Daly City, South City, actually, it's in the, let me pull up the staff report, that there's kind of like this GSR partnership, South San Francisco, Colma, Daly City, and San Bruno. And so what are, this is, you know, over half a million dollars, what are their contributions to this effort?
So the agreement is more an agreement with SFPUC, and you'll have to excuse me, I don't know all the details related to this agreement, but my understanding is that we have an agreement with SFPUC during the wet years to not pump and that they would provide us with drinking water supply. And then during the drought years, then we would use the groundwater wells to supplement and relieve a little pressure off of SFPUC. And so those are called the take years, and so they're actually paying us not to pump currently, and then we will be pumping later when we need to supplement with our groundwater well when, you know, there's more drought years.
If I can supplement that answer.
Please, city manager.
It's also important to note, the city engineer was absolutely right. They do pay us not to pump, but it is an asset that the city of San Bruno has its own wells. A number of those cities do not have their own wells, and the fact that we have our own wells, which provides sustainability and a resource here, also means that we have to do these projects to rehabilitate them and ensure that they're functioning. And so while we are getting money, it's important to note that this is our asset that provides significant benefits that we take for locally.
Okay, okay. And then, is there a benefit that would then, I guess, end up saving money for our residents at some point? And do we have any projections of what that would look like?
I think they would have the security of having a groundwater supply that not other, as city manager Rogan had mentioned, not many other agencies are fortunate to own their water enterprise and have the facilities to produce water to meet their demands. So I think that would be the benefit. I can't say that we did a dollar cost estimate, but I think there's, you know, inherent value in having that supply.
Okay, I think that's my questions for now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, thank you for the report. Yeah, this is, this is one of those projects that got kind of lost. But here we are, dealing with it, right? And my first question is, I'm a little surprised by the lack of proposals received. And I don't believe this designer worked with us before. Did staff get an opportunity to kind of find out, were people too busy? Like, why, why, why did we only get one proposal?
Yes, we wondered the same thing and so we contacted them. It was a variety of responses. At one firm we've worked with, apparently they changed their processes and so they weren't able to... They didn't, I guess it slipped through their cracks, which is not a great answer. And, you know, I think they're kicking themselves, and I think that is something that we really considered. We really took care in contacting the references to see what the references were like because I personally have not heard of them either, but they had very positive referrals. And so, I mean, we posted it on our website as well as emailed out to 12 different firms and, you know, we got a response back from a firm that we hadn't worked with previously, that was not one of the 12 that we had emailed, and so they had taken the initiative. I think, you know, had their references come back, you know, potentially questionable, we would have, you know, readily re-advertized, but in an effort to, you know, keep the project moving and because we did do our due diligence in getting references, we opted to proceed.
Right, so I'm always a little apprehensive when, you know, we're dealing just with one bidder and it's hard to determine if we're getting value there. But here we are. I'm in favor of this project and thank you for some of the questions that I asked earlier today. This well will generate or increase the capacity of our system 25%. And apparently, our water is produced at half the cost of what we buy it for. So every gallon, every, every unit of water that we get is a savings. So I wanted to let people know about that because it's really unique that we have our own water system. And for years, we weren't reinvesting into our infrastructure of getting this water out. And this well's been out of service for 12 years. So we need to make sure, and as a beloved Chris Palace would say, you know, water is life. And here we are in a drought here and we're trying to work out that we do have an agreement to deal with that a little bit. So the question for the well abandonment, is that cost covered in this part of the project? Or that's a separate cost for abandoning the current well?
That would need to be designed. I suppose I could go with either, although it would potentially make more sense to go with the latter phase of the construction because the initial phase is a production well and might not really lend itself to, you know, the type of contractor who controls wells.
But this would be part of their scope to oversee the design of the well abandonment and that all gets approved by the, from the state. But that would be something they would manage in this $610,000.
Yes, so the decommissioning of the well.
Okay, okay. And I guess, I guess the biggest, the biggest issue that I have with this project right now is, as I look at the Capital Improvement Program, page 290, and it has the cost there of $46,000 and construction of the 1.8 million. So I think, I'm guessing and giving staff the benefit of the doubt, this is one of the projects that kind of got lost and there is no money budgeted for years 2021, 2022 through 2024, 25. So that additional $3 million to build the well isn't anywhere. And, but this is the reality we're facing that in order to build this well and the facilities, we're gonna need to spend that money.
Correct, and we will need to design it now when we have sufficient budget to pay for the design right now. And this is part of one of the projects, you know, the many projects we're looking at for the CIP budgeting process to make sure that it's adequately phased and funded appropriately.
Got it. And because it's in these numbers here in the CIP, the council eliminated the rate increase in our water and sewer for this year because a big reason was we had adequate funding available to complete, to continue operations. So this additional money that currently is not shown in the CIP, it's, we'll have enough funding in our water enterprise to go ahead and cover this. It's not gonna affect operations.
Let me ask the city manager to chime in on this, please.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. And council member Medina, I think it's important to back up before we go forward. I don't think it's a correct statement to say that this project was lost. The city made progress on a number of water and sewer projects, and this one is now bubbling up, and we are now moving forward on this project. In addition, with regard to the CIP form that you're looking at, which I believe is in our adopted 2021 budget, what you're saying is that the projected costs in the out years are not there. That does not mean that the city does not have sufficient funds within the water fund balance to cover this project and other projects. It is true that the city did cancel the 5% rate increase because there are sufficient funds in the water fund. I just asked staff to confirm for me the balance in the water fund, but I believe it's over $10 million. And so while the infrastructure that we have to do is significant and there, and that $10 million is actually in the operating portion, there's over $40 million accumulated in the water fund. And so as we project out all of the projects we need, there is sufficient funds to cover those projects. Now that does not mean that we may not have to increase water rates in the future, and we've had those conversations with the city council before, that when you go a number of years without increasing rates, then you have to do a larger increase. And so we do have to do a five-year rate study in the next calendar year and we are planning, in the next fiscal year, and we are planning for that. But I just want to caution council that because there were not funds shown in those out years, you should not conclude that the city does not have sufficient funds to move forward with this project. And we'll have larger conversations about the water fund through our capital budgeting process.
I appreciate that answer. That's why I asked the question, making sure that there was funding available. So I'm satisfied with that answer. We do need to build this well, and I am in favor of this project. Thank you.
Council member Hamilton.
So I just wanted to share, as you all know, I'm the city's representative on the Bowe's Cup Board Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency, which manages our relationship with the SFPUC to ensure we have a voice in the agreements to get water from Hetch Hetchy. The, you know, we heard, we heard as part of the staff The, you know, we heard, we heard as part of the staff report that, you know, how, how, how things operate, you know, when we're in wet years, we try to let our aquifers, the local aquifers replenish so that that water is there for dry years. In two thousand and eighteen Sacramento, the state legislature in Sacramento adopted the approved Bay Delta Plan. And if that stands, there's currently, we're currently, the, the board and, and the S F P U C and other agencies are bandied together to try to get an alternate plan in place. But if that plan stands, the the, in multi-year, multi-year drought years, when we have back-to-back-to-back droughts, which are going to be more and more common as we move, move forward, we could face up to fifty percent mandatory rationing over, over current levels because of the amount of water that the Bay Delta Plan would, would require that we not take from the Tuolumne River. So it's so critical that we have, we're very lucky to have our own local sources of water. And it's important, it's very important that we maintain the infrastructure to be able to get at it. So I'm, I am absolutely in favor of this, of this project. One question that I have is, once we, once we have the design, would we, would that put us in a position to apply for, for state or federal grants to help with the construction? Are there any, are there any opportunities that we're looking at out there that might be available to us to help us with those construction costs? Considering it would be a water infrastructure project?
Certainly opportunities as they present themselves, we will look at those and you know, we can keep an eye out for those even during design. I don't think we necessarily need to wait until design is over. If the state or region were to provide funding, certainly look into that and, you know, apply as appropriate.
Great, thank you.
Council member Salazar.
Thank you. And, and so I just wanted to also express my support for not just this well, but the existence of wells in general in, in San Bruno. The vice mayor mentioned Chris Palace and it definitely would be remiss of us if, if Chris Palace's name were not mentioned whenever wells come up because he was a very staunch advocate for, for first bringing wells to San Bruno and they've proven although expensive to maintain, a valuable and important asset to the city. And we've been without this well for a while and I think looking forward at our infrastructure, this will be an important part of it. And so I just wanted to add that. No other questions.
No, as was stated by the vice mayor and council member Salazar, yes, I remember Chris Palace was probably one of the few on the council then that was very adamant about doing that and having the well supply and that it does save for us not having to buy as much. But then we obviously have to, we had to, we were required to balance with the aquifer that we didn't take too much. But, but needless to say, yes, that was one of his passions. So these are important things that we need to keep up and take care of. And so, yes, I as well am in support and appreciate my colleagues' questions and engagement in this. And it is by action of a resolution. Is there any action by council?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion Medina, second, and Salazar. Roll call, please.
Council member Hamilton.
Hi.
Council member Mason.
Aye.
Council member Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.